I often thought lines of courtroom not between me and magistrate where we don't have to walk through his office to get to the courtroom. That seemed like that had been an easy fix to put the courtroom between the two offices. And then the lobby sharing it together. Of course, you have folks at magistrate that are talking about stuff they don't want the people appropriate to hear. And everybody gets real quiet and they start talking about stuff like that and we can't hear them hardly. So, I just wanted to look at the idea of a possibility of making that a private, more private setting if possible. But not on this budget. That would be next year's if I do it that same. Any questions for me? If not, I'll get out of y'all's way. Have a good one.
I can see how you could switch that for me. Just leave that lobby there.
Right.
Put a wall and have another door. Because you've got that door coming into your office from the hallway there and then you've got that conference room.
So, we've got a little...
I wonder if you could let magistrate have the current lobby and then y'all come to reconfigure.
That's kind of what I thought.
Fall in a door and reconfigure.
When you come into my office from the hallway, we've got that little area that you can sit.
Yeah.
I thought about just bringing a wall straight across into the conference room and putting two windows there so they would come in out of the hallway into that little area separate from magistrate's and board up or frame up those two windows where we can't see into magistrate anymore. I don't think, you know, if you look at what we've got now, we don't need a whole lot of room. It's two chairs and a window. So, it ain't like I need a big room for lobby. It would mainly just be you'd be able to walk in, sit down, do your business, go back out in the hallway. I did think about the possibility since there's two windows there and maybe leaving one of them and using that window for like things that are not as private, like if you're going to apply for a gun permit or a marriage license or getting a copy of a death certificate or birth certificate. Those are not as sensitive as, you know, some of the traffic stuff or, you know, talking about love when passing there. That seems to be more sensitive and private. So, but like I said, I looked at that. There's, I don't know what walls in the walls, what wiring and the logistics of that. I don't know what it would look like. So, I'm gonna get a contractor just to come and look at it and say, "Yeah, you can't do that." Or, "Yeah, that'll work." Or, "No, you can put the wall here." And just get an idea of what it would look like.
Here.
I'm gonna email him.
Yeah, he's been doing a lot of...
I mean, I think he could at least give answers to questions.
Yeah. He could give you some idea of what you might be able to do.
Problem, I think, is that I'm not sure you've got a whole lot of room to do anything. It's a small area.
It would be smaller than what we've got right now, for sure. But I don't think I need a whole lot of room for people just because the way we're doing it right now, if you come in and both of our windows have somebody at it, we pretty much ask you to go back out in the hall and sit on one of those benches outside and then you can...
Yeah.
We don't like people standing over somebody else's shoulder while they're trying to do their business. So, that's kind of how we monitor it now. So, like I said, we don't really need a whole lot of space for them just to sit there.
I don't remember exactly how big it is. So, let me just ask you, would it be big enough that you could just put a wall right down the middle to sit?
Of the lobby?
Of what's there now?
Well, we... Possible. When you come into the lobby, right straight ahead is a door into Judge Johnson's conference room, right out of the lobby. So, I'd have to put the wall to miss that door, which I think would make our side smaller. The challenge might be coming in and then turning left to go through an opening to get into that little area. I don't know. But that's, I mean, I could have him look at that option and see what that looks like because it may not be a whole lot bigger than what my other idea is as far as a seat, a sitting area. So, at this point, anything is a possibility or an idea that I wouldn't mind somebody just telling me that, "Yeah, you can do it." Because you've got the lights, you've got duck work, I think. So, you just have to play with all those pieces to see what would work, if any.
Well, I don't have any questions.
All right. Well, I will get out of y'all's way.
Thank you.
Let y'all move along.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Go with the biscuit, Hal.
Go get a biscuit. I think I'll do that. Thank y'all very much. See you. See y'all.
Okay, so, by God. So, Amy will not be here. The next one after that is Nancy Adams with UGA extension. I think 10 o'clock is her first availability, so if y'all want me to see if I could move tax commissioner up or mine. It's Nancy who won't be here until 10.
I'm good with whatever you want me to do.
Yeah. Or we've got other budgets that we can discuss that we don't necessarily have meetings for, you know, meetings for because they're the ones that I pretty much just have to develop myself from one year to the next. So, we could look at some of those if y'all want to.
Okay. What are those?
Yeah, that's good.
One of them is the commissioner.
Oh, but let me go. I have plenty of copies. Let me try and get those in. I'll bring them in here and wait. Just look over it. Did you get the one that I emailed you for?
I have not even looked at email.
Okay.
I know Nancy. I wonder if you've been to the extension office since she moved into the health department?
Not since she's been...
It looks great. They've got a ton of space and they're very happy. All kinds of classrooms.
Well, they waited a long time for it.
Yeah. She does want to put up a wall, but lobby is kind of wasted space for them, so she wants to put up a wall, which I think is in her capital request. But she's, they've, they're gonna be able to do a lot of things there. It's a good space for them.
Good.
See, someone was to mark two papers off.
And that program is growing, so that's good.
That'll do, don't get...
I'm not telling you, but Nancy's, what are we required to do at pay a UGA extension? What's that? I guess we were written agreement of...
Well, we have to provide them space and then we pay a percentage of their salaries. But UGA pays the majority of that. I think our biggest thing with them is providing the space.
Okay, so, on the, the one that I just handed y'all is the one to the commissioner? Mm-hmm. I don't... Now, I just kind of did this based on the information that I had. Charlie and I had not discussed, had a chance to discuss this yet. So, if y'all want to look over it, I never really, you know, know for sure what the travel and training and that kind of thing that y'all have coming down the pipe is going to involve. So, I pretty much just left those as they were, but if y'all...
Did they ever come short on any of those?
No. Not in the last several years in any way.
I think those classes and trainings are all so good.
Probably beneficial.
Yeah. I did increase the professional services, that's for legal.
Yeah.
Because we're trending, you know, we trend pretty heavy in those areas these days with the legal counsel and learning counsel, as Jim Smith says. And, you know, there's a few other things that come out of that too, but that's mostly on the attorneys' fees. I increased the telltale on a little because that's how that was trending. And really until, it's hard to know how everything's gonna trend with this, you know, until we got a few months in the new, a few, really a year in this new building, it's kind of hard to know.
For sure.
What kind of effect that's gonna have. I did increase advertising a little bit just because, you know, we're advertising more, you know, we seem to be advertising more bids and, you know, things of that nature.
The gasoline BOC, that's a fixed amount. I'm not sure how we can reduce that.
I just did, I did that based on, you know, what we've spent thus far in June.
But that's not actually for gasoline, even though that's what it says it is. That's the, what do you call it, the travel?
Oh, travel, yes. Okay.
Yeah. So, it would be the same as last year.
I was thinking about literally just gasoline. I wasn't thinking about the...
Yeah. It kind of got stuck under the gasoline side because that's where it used to be, but...
Travel, monetary reimbursement?
I'll put that back to... It's gonna be two.
Did we increase our rate? Did we increase our reimbursement rate? The federal was seventy cents now.
Y'all remember my close this though now?
We did, but I would have kind of ended it. That's what people are turning in anyway. But that's not what that amount is.
That's just something that happened. Y'all can peruse and let me know if you see anything that...
Well, probably ninety percent of it's stuff that just kind of is what it is.
But, you know, the biggest thing, one of the biggest things was the professional services.
Yeah. Now, that includes the auditors and everything.
No, the auditors are in my budget. They're in finance.
Are they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then that would be the ACCG fees, our membership fees and...
No, the professional services in the BOC budget is pretty much legal. Legal counsel.
Where are ACCG and...
That's gonna be down in dues and fees, down in the...
Oh, dues and fees. I see it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's down there.
Okay, I see it.
And y'all look at your education and training and travel and see if you think that, you know, we're good to leave that where it is or if you know of anything coming down the pipe that needs, you know, that might need more.
I don't know of anything that'd be different for twenty-six and twenty-five. I might have a better idea after the legislative conference because the, what is they called? I can't think of the guy's name anyway. The education portion of it, they're having a, that committee's having a meeting down there. And I'm on that committee, so hopefully there'll be some information coming.
Jeff Christie.
Jeff Christie. Jeff Christie's committee, yeah. I'm trying to think of the guy's name, something or other school of...
Oh, yeah.
Carl Vincent Institute.
Carl Vincent.
Carl Vincent Institute.
That place. They have that place.
Oh, that they might increase, be increasing fees or something?
I don't think it's that they're increasing fees. I think probably, and this is just off the top of my head here, I think the thrust of it'll be more toward new, new classes, new subject matter because they're getting to the point where a lot of people have attended all of them. You know, it's kind of time to refresh that. So, I think that's what it'll be. If it is, if that is the case, I don't know that it'll impact us all that much because we all pretty much take whatever classes we can get anyway. It'll just be different classes if that's what it turns out to be.
This one we can look at too. This is just the coroner. His is usually very unbedding. And he, you know, he just, he basically just calls me and says, "I don't think mine's changed any. I don't think I'm okay." So, you know...
The coroner's lobby is really active at the legislature though.
Are they?
They're wanting the coroner to be defined as a constitutional officer.
I think if they've been, was that in the works last year or two?
Yeah. It didn't make it through, but they're still trying.
He does not update me on any of that kind of stuff, but...
Well, really until it does make it through, it's probably not anything to update. But that, I'm calling it the coroner's lobby is nice, whatever their equivalent to ACCG is for coroners.
They're advocates.
They're, yeah, they're really high and heavy on increased salaries and constitutional officer status.
I wonder if, if that amount is set by local legislation like ours is though, I wonder what kind of effect any changes coming down the pipe on that front would have on the local legislation set.
There won't be any effect if the local legislation is higher than whatever they put in as the mandated amount.
Okay.
But if it's lower, we'll have to pay the higher of the two.
There was some good rebuttal and conversation about that when we were in Tate.
Y'all got free time? You want to talk about adding more money to mine? Fire.
Late night.
About what?
About Tate. There were a couple of commissioners that made comments about that, that...
About the coroners?
Yes. Yeah. At the Tate meeting.
Yeah.
It might have been second day, but I don't remember what day it was, but it was, you know, these that don't have that much, these smaller communities that, they don't have the workload or hourly, ones that don't have, you know, twenty hours a week, fifteen hours a week and we're having to pay them a certain amount.
Well, that's the... But I could say that.
On the other hand, they have to look at dead people.
I know.
Yeah.
You know, how we want it.
Yeah, no. And be on call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although if you have two assistant coroners, I'm not sure you have to be on call that much.
Yeah. Is that the law now? Do we have two?
No, we have two. No, it's not.
We have to. I didn't know. I didn't, Jerry. Do what? We have two deputies and then the jury. And I think they rotate. We added that second last year, right?
Yeah, I think it was either last year or four, I think it was like...
Macy and Charlene.
Melissa.
Hickey's names.
Yes. Hickey.
Hickey's names.
We, something that we, and it's not really reflected here because these requests have to go through a process, but in my fourteen years, the request for indigent burial assistance has increased, you know, there's, there's usually at least one or two occurrences every year of somebody contacting us, you know.
How many? You've got seven hundred dollars.
But they have to, well, um...
Twelve.
Yeah.
Well, seven hundred actual for...
Oh, actual, yeah.
Yeah. But just to sell the pass you get.
Yeah. So, that would be one, right?
That would be one. So, you know, that may, I don't know that we need to really increase that at this point, but it may be something that as population grows and...
If you have a lot of, it won't be over budget.
I think we should make that fourteen instead of twelve.
I probably would make it to cover two, you know, make it fourteen.
So, change that to fourteen.
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea.
Surprised we actually only have two.
We used to, we used to hardly ever get them, but the last few years we've had, you know, at least two or maybe even three. But like I said, they have to go through a process. They, it's not that they come in, make the request and we just write a check. They have to go through a process of verifying that there's, you know, no next of kin, nobody that can take responsibility for, you know, has the means to take responsibility for the remains and, you know, that kind of stuff.
But I think as our homeless population grows, that'll probably increase some. Take me down the road.
Hey, Stacy.
Are those things set? Is that set? Like you've got seven hundred dollars either or is that just what somebody charged?
That's what they charge us. That's what they charge. And the funeral home? And I'm sure that, because, and I hate to talk about deceased this way, but if there is somebody that has, you know, that is in, is in need of an indigent burial, the most cost-effective way to, you know, serve that person, serve that deceased is cremation. So, there's just, you know, they charge us, they take care of the cremation and then they send us a bill for seven hundred dollars.
Who said that?
And it...
Respectful.
Well, I know. It's unfortunate.
No.
It's just, it's always very sad. What's really even, you know, more sad to me is there are instances where, and these wouldn't qualify, but there are instances where people pass and there are next of kin or there are people who could take responsibility but won't. That's, that's what's really sad to me.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's uncommon.
No. Yeah. I just can't imagine. But this...
But all that said, I don't have anything on the coroner's.
Okay, I'll increase that one. I can get my mouse to work. I'll increase that one to fourteen and that would at least cover two, which would... I'm gonna get my thumb back in. Do you have a portable hole punch? I do not, but I can take it while I'm...
Punch. They've got the little... Punch. I like a little hole punch. It's kind of satisfying. I do too.
You can't get things that are older, Steve, so...
Yeah. I think we talked about this, but how many sheriff's cars did we do last year? Six. Six.
I think that's for eight.
That's for ten.
Last year.
That's for ten.
That's for ten this year.
I think that is for ten last year, isn't it? I don't know. I think they started with ten and then Stacy said he could live with eight and then we told him he couldn't get up at six.
Do you know how many they have total? Do you know how many they have total?
Hundred and eighty-four.
What?
I don't know.
I know it seems like it.
At one time, many years ago, that number was sixty, but I have no idea what it is now.
I know it's on the report that we get. I think like a year or so ago, he was caught up and had a full staff, right? I remember him saying that and then, was that, is that gonna be shortened? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we still got full staff in terms of what was deemed to be a full staff back then. I think what he's saying now is that because of the growth and the need for more people, that full staff definition has changed.
Gotcha. I thought, I thought I understood him to say he's short resource officer at the extension center.
Well, he did, but that's because he needed more resource officers. The high school wanted two instead of one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he's short resource officers, but not because he doesn't have as many as he used to have. He doesn't have as many as he now needs, if that makes sense. On the other hand, I could have totally misunderstood and just...
Are you getting what?
That's the way I'm...
And I did see the school's paying for some of that.
The school pays half, yeah. They didn't used to do that, but they already do.
Couple of years ago, Stacy negotiated.
Yeah.
She wants a van. She wants a van every year and we're not getting around to it.
Oh, thanks.
Extension officer.
Yeah, she's been asking for a van for a while.
There's a truck over there. I've never seen it. It would just park somewhere up now, but there are, they are, where they are, there's a truck with extension service on it.
This is mine.
And I don't know if that belongs to us or if that's a state vehicle.
If it's extension service, it should be a state vehicle.
Might as well look this and see for a while. About a four hundred dollar increase? At this point?
Can you not put that thing?
Well, I was looking to see, I did increase the professional services for auditing just in the event that they have to adjust a little bit for the twenty-five audit with a, you know, another single audit or something like that. The travel and education, well, no, not education's good. Travel I did increase because I would love for Rhonda and I to be able to go to the GGFOA conference if we can. Sometimes it's manageable and sometimes it's not because it's always right now. It's like this time of year when we're doing budgets and, you know, that kind of thing. But if I can't go, I would like for Rhonda to be able to go, just so that...
I think it's great that she's learning so much.
Yes. Well, I've, I feel like I've, we've got great staff and we've had great staff, you know, in the, most, mostly great staff in the past, like Clarice was great too. But I feel like in Rhonda, I have somebody that if I were to jump out in front of a bus or something, you know, I could... if I were to jump out in front of a bus or something, you know, I could pass the torch to her. She'd obviously have some learning to do, just like anybody would, but she could do it. And I feel, I feel good that I have that person that, you know, could, cause she did, when I was gone on vacation, she did text me a few times and this, and I didn't mind because it was, she was trying to take care of things in my absence that I didn't have weight on me when I got back, which was nice.
I said if you can make it work to both go.
Yeah, and, and if I can't go, she, I mean, I've been able to go before. And, you know, we've done, I've done a lot of it via Zoom and that kind of thing, but, um, I think it'd be good experience for her to be able to go.
How much notice do you get of when and where?
Um, they usually start sending out the notifications late summer. So we can plan, we can, we can plan, you know, around it.
Once you find out, just make sure you keep your calendar clear for that.
And I have mixed, you know, I'm, a lot of the classes are really good and I didn't really enjoy them. Some of them are just filler. And I'm sure that's probably, you know, the way it is with a lot of these programs, but, um, especially the Carl Benson, you know, I really enjoy all of those. The social function, I can do without you because I'm not, that's just not me. But, um, but I do, you know, enjoy getting to kind of meet and talk with others.
I might just see what your take is on that class that you're taking because that was probably the biggest disappointing class that I've had.
Oh, which one? Growth?
Managing growth.
Oh, yeah.
Probably because my expectations were so high for it.
That was a class I was like, I thought I took that before, but, they sit down and see, but, um.
Yeah, I think we know what you think, but.
You know, there are not many, but there are a handful of instructors that, is this a good one or is it not?
Do y'all have?
I don't know who do an instructor on it.
Y'all probably have had, have y'all had John Holsey for any of your? He's a Carl Benson, he's Carl Benson's student. He's one of the best. I, I enjoy all of his classes.
Real energetic, like?
Yes.
Super?
Yeah.
Does he do finance once mostly? Okay, that might be. And I remember thinking of finance that I was like, this is a great guy to do this because.
He calls it finance.
Finance.
We, I call it finance. I guess that's the country, that's the country version, but he calls it finance. But he's been a great teacher. I figure y'all probably have him. He's very, he's inter, he keeps him engaged.
Moves around a lot?
He does. It, you're not just.
Yeah.
Like this. Some of them I've had, just in my head, as y'all have.
You're gonna get those.
Yeah, you are, you are.
They take, knock you out of the park here.
But you can, you can learn from those too. Yeah.
Well, when you mentioned finance and finance, reminds me of.
I like pecans and.
I have, I have a pet peeve. It drives me crazy. Physical ear.
Oh, God.
Oh, yeah. Instead of physical?
Yeah. Well, I hear splash. Not splashed, splash. Yeah, I hear splash. But back to mine, those are really the only changes I made. I know there's a few, you know, there might be some, I think there's still some admin personnel related things that we'll all have to discuss at some point, but,
Kim, well, you know people are gonna be bored out of their minds listening to this one.
Oh, I have my AirPods and playing video games and everything over here. I guess that means I'm bored out of my mind already.
Well, sometimes if, if that's her first time, taking her and showing her the ropes and then you can, then when she asks questions, you answer right then, instead of bringing it back and you're like, forgot the question.
Yeah. I would love for both of us to be able to go, but if we can't both go and she can go, then that'd be great.
Well, if this is.
And it's usually at Jekyll, which where they.
If this is budget insufficient for both of you to go, just make sure your calendar stays clear and go.
I will. One year it was really easy because it was during COVID and it was all. So I stayed home for three days.
I do like that.
Sat at my line classes, sat at my table with my.
I do too.
I do too. It's a lot cheaper for the county and, and, and we're all used to it now.
Yeah, and this is, this is not one of the, I don't feel like I have to go every year. But I do like to go, you know, every, every other year, every couple of years I like to go just because I do. You know, there are a lot of social things that are involved, which is, I hope it's okay, but.
Well, but you can also learn so much by asking other people as well.
Fanning County and, um, Sherry up in Fanning and I talk a good bit. We talk probably every week about something, questions, you know. Her asking me, me asking her. Piggins, I don't really communicate with them all that much.
Yeah, I said the same thing with, um.
I, I, yeah, yeah. I don't really communicate with Piggins all that much. And even Lumpkin Union, one of the, over in Raven, one of the, um, the finance director in Raven used to be one of our auditors. When we first went with Ruston, one of our audit, he was, he was one of the auditors, so he and I talked some. I feel like I've got some good compadres, counterparts that I can bounce things off of and hopefully they feel the same way about me.
ACCG just added, and I can't remember her name, it should be you.
ACCG?
Just added a lady in for their services. And she had been the county manager in Whitfield and Catoosa and then Habersham and then she's from Dalton. And she'd been the CFO in Dalton. I can't remember her name. She's very smart though, very nice. And they just added.
Well, now you gotta think of her name, cause that's. So she was where?
Well, she was at Catoosa in Whitfield and the last thing she did was Habersham. And then they hired her to help with that. I'm not gonna say the name of the county, but there's a county that she's gonna go to this week, next week. And actually do their budget for them because they're so, they're small and they don't know how.
Was she the finance director in Catoosa?
She was. The last thing she did was in, in, I left that home. Uh, the last thing she did was at Habersham. But she knew you and Andrea and she knew everybody.
It's probably somebody, it may, I wonder if it's somebody we worked with that, um, he's alone.
No, no, I, I didn't get that.
Have you met or do you know the, she's a sole commissioner, so one of a handful, female. And she's where the Kia plant's going, um, down near, towards Savannah?
Brown County?
Maybe so. She's younger than me. But, um, I met her in my first, she was in my class in my first, when I first came in and then she stayed. She was reelected.
Jenna somebody is sole commissioner in Pulaski.
Okay.
And that, that's not real far from there.
Yeah, I think that's who it is, that, um, and.
I think there's only one sole commissioner in South Atlanta, isn't there? Both are in North Atlanta. No. Blackley is Mike Davis. And then there's Jenna.
Jenna's the one.
Nashford.
I think maybe.
Is sole commissioner in the Pulaski.
She was coming in and she's, oh, I'm not confusing. A couple of stories or something. I might be confusing her with another one that was. Anyway, she was coming in as her first term and all of that was going on, the, the wheeling and dealing with that. And it was so far over her head and it was the governor involved and all that. And then her water is terrible. So they're bringing in sewer lines and borrowing from another county water. And it was crazy. She was talking about fire hose and with a big old international company coming in, that small town that she was being beaten up on one side from, why are you bringing this here to, oh my gosh, please, yes, our town's dying. But so many of those South Georgia towns are hurting.
I mentioned this yesterday, probably did, but. We will also be looking, I'm still working on a short-term rental apartment budget. That was really gonna be a best guess because it's new and, you know.
Well, that's all the budget is anyway.
Oh, yeah, it is. Here it is. Mary and I are gonna get together on that, maybe tomorrow afternoon and then we'll see. About some numbers for that budget, so I'll be giving y'all that. The chief of offices, if you go, if you, like you're going into the kitchen, if you go down that little hallway, past the kitchen door, she's at the end of that, at the end of that.
That's her bus. I knew we were talking about.
You have to, have to go past the kitchen door and then turn right and then she's the first door on the left.
Oh, okay.
This building goes on.
I think we'll put, put a corner maze, Mike, sometime in here.
I went up to the third floor and I got lost.
If we was to put a maze in here, we'd probably find him people a year from now.
It's crazy, the halls.
I know how to get on the elevator and go to two and come around here. That's all I know and it's all I care to know.
On third, I got, I got lost. I got, and I thought I needed.
I haven't been up to third since they've done, I think I've been up there one time since they've started doing all this stuff up there.
So turned around.
The fire marshal had the wall and the door where we could get down that hall, go into our offices, but you can't go that way anymore when I get around.
Oh, what? Oh, we can't go this way?
You can go to that first. You can go to that first. And if you get off the elevator and turn right, then you turn right again immediately. You go down there and then go through the door and then left and left and then.
Making our offices on the right?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
But I'd always gone through this other one because there wasn't anybody in there.
That's how I did also. That's why it showed me.
I do like it over here.
You do like it every time? Cause it's quite, more quiet for you.
It is.
What about you?
Um, it's quieter than over there, but it's not.
It's starting to catch on.
Hope people are realizing.
It took a little while, I think, for a lot of people to find us. It, it's definitely starting to, we're starting to have more, especially with all the short-term rental stuff that we've had going on for the last several months, there's been more.
One thing though, that I'm, I don't get here that I used to get, is people dropping in and saying, you know, I was up here to get my car tag and I thought, wow, I was here. I just dropped in and asked, when you gonna pay my roads?
Oh, oh, that's good.
So I don't get that.
You know, there's one other regular visitor that we used to have at the courthouse. I don't think I've seen him over here yet.
Oh, you will.
You think so?
I get a call from him every now and then.
Okay.
I can't understand what he's saying, what he's telling you, because he's like over here, but.
I had a new road complaint, sorry, can you help?
I did too. I wonder if y'all get that sent in, in somebody.
Actually, it was to him and copied us.
No, this.
Oh, no, it was to all three of us. So we all got it.
I hadn't even looked this morning.
Can I ask a question? You all were discussing earlier, your, your costs at the commissioner's office. I think, I wanna, I think you were touching on that. Can I ask, um, the, the, um, Joint Development Authority is kind of a odd kind of entity in, in that I believe it's the Greater Gilmer Community Foundation being there. In core, you've got revenue sources that are feeding into that structure. And in cooperation with the, um, Gilmer Chamber. How is the salary of the Joint Development Authority Director paid? Is that paid by this, the county? Or is that?
No, the, uh, the county and the two cities, um, put in a certain amount of money every year each. And then the board of directors determines what the salary of the director there would be.
And then there, there's.
Don't I say the board of directors, the JDA board of directors.
So that would be like Lex and, and the two city, um, mayors and, and others?
And I'm on it too.
Yeah, right, of course. Um, and so that's, that's a separate board. So you make up a board of the Joint Development Authority. And he is an employee of all, in an agreement, a mutual agreement between the three municipalities. But then the curiosity is the chamber element. Are they paying a portion of his salary? Are they just paying for a portion of the facility? There's some contribution, I understand, the Chamber of Commerce to that entity.
Um, I'm not familiar with the chamber's contribution. But, uh, I can't say that they, they are not paying any of his salary.
Okay, so that's probably coming through private funding through the Greater Gilmer Community Foundation and probably the Rural Center for Prosperity. Assuming.
I don't see a chamber could do it unless it was somehow tourism related.
I guess it just what, I figured that was part of the case. And I'm only talking because we're kind of in a lull, I think, waiting for, but, um, you know, that there's a lot of meetings with the Chamber of Commerce there. So there's some kind of relationship, obviously, because it's your development, that's your Development Authority Board and your director is there. Um, so there has to be some correlation of working with the Chamber of Commerce with that.
Now, when you say there's a lot of meetings, are you talking about a meeting with the JDA and the chamber or just?
Well, no, just chamber meetings there in general.
Because part of that, uh, building, uh, the function of that building is to allow people a place to meet. And they're not, and there's a lot of different entities that meet there and they're not necessarily associated with the Joint Development Authority.
Yeah.
So they just give them a place to meet.
I see. So it's kind of like what the community center is.
I think it's a little more than that because.
Or was.
It also gives people, uh, if you wanna come in and start a business, um, you can have space in that building for, not dedicated space, but, uh, you can, uh, you need an office address, for instance. That can be your office address for a while anyway, while you get established. So, uh, the point of it is to, uh, uh, encourage and, and assist new businesses to get off the ground. By providing, basically providing space for them. So, uh, there's a, there's a number of businesses that, uh, that meet there and maybe you can give that as an office address. Um, but they're not directly associated with the JDA anyway.
Right. I mean, I understa- I understand the, the premise of, of core and I under, but, you know, I also, you know, was just curious because there's a space there and I wondered who's paying for that space. But I guess it's the Greater Gilmer Community Foundation and rents that are coming in from the Center for Rural Prosperity and other, and probably a lot of, well, I'm probably, a lot of other funding from the state and which, a lot of that comes from the federal government.
You know, when that, uh, building was first purchased, the Joint Development Authority was the, uh, I don't know, for lack of a better term, I'll say the, the agent that purchased it. For the, uh, Greater. But, and they, they got grants and some grants and all these things. The, uh, plan was at some point that the title of that building would be turned over to them. And that has happened. So the JDA now actually no longer owns that building. So any monies would be.
Do they pay the county for any interest? The county never made a vested interest, so financial?
No.
Contribution to that building.
The only contribution the county ever made was just what we give to the JDA every year is our portion of the, the agreement.
Right. So you're, the county really never had interest in that anyway. So when you say turned it over.
This was primarily, um, a grant that David Ralston.
Right, the four hundred and some odd thousand dollars that they.
So that, that's, uh, that didn't, none of it, none of the money to purchase that building was any county money involved.
Right. But the ca- so the county's interest in it is just that it provides a service for, um, you know, as an incubator, business incubator and, but then as. but then as your, but your Joint Development Authority Director is in there, and that is a revenue stream coming in from outside sources, say for One, One Georgia, or Homes, or any, yet the other.
Coming in, it's not from the three entities.
Right. Um, right, so that, that's what I'm kind of just trying to understand, is there's so much money that comes in for these, you know, grants and funds, and it all flows through a third-party entity that's not part of this government, yet the citizens are paying the salary, so I'm trying to underst- to understand that, I guess.
Well, the purpose of Joint Development Authority from day one was to bring businesses into the county. And that's where a lot of the incubator, uh, commony part of it came into play, so. That said. There's, there's no other benefit to the county other than to bring their businesses.
So it's a, it's a nongovernmental organization. It's an NGF.
I'm down here because I plug in right here, so.
You know, you see me, seeing me in your pink explains why.
But we still get to contribute something.
Yeah.
Do you have a pink shirt I can wear tomorrow?
Oh.
To wear under a hoodie because it's pink.
Yeah, oh.
I know, I get it, it's October.
Are y'all ordering shirts and deciding when to wear them?
They're, they're cute, too.
I had a one of them. Very cute.
Thank you. My mouse is pretty good, died, so.
I've got more room up here than, um, considering.
Have y'all moved yet?
Yes.
Are you loving it?
Yes.
I got the tour, it looks great, wow.
I can't ask for it. There's been so much going on over here.
Yeah, I believe you. I believe you. I mean, I've only been in-house a few days because I've been out on the road doing programs.
Was it working good?
Oh, it's delightful.
Good.
Yeah, it's, everybody that has come from university has said, oh my goodness, this is so much space. Look at what you can do with this, but I know. I turned the, uh, urinalysis lab into a kitchen. No one saw where I was going with that until I did it.
That might be something to keep.
Quiet about it. No, no, no. Unless, my friends, I did have to create something to put over the little door.
That's what you're coming up with, created.
So that the children don't ask. But I do wonder how many of them have gone through there, I guess.
I don't know what it was used for.
And they found out?
Oh, well, I don't know. I did, I've never taken here before. Hopefully they.
Well, I'll find you in a minute here.
All right.
Day two. The department number is seventy-one thirty.
Well, yeah, six seventy-one thirty, I just didn't recognize agricultural resources.
Yeah. Y'all can call us for anything.
Just call us?
Yeah.
Just send us money?
Sure. Yeah.
I did share with them how great it looks and about you talking about wanting to put that wall up and.
Yeah.
All right, you wanna share with us about?
Well, what?
Tell her what.
Do you have questions? I don't know, I mean, it's gone differently every year. I've joined y'all, so. I tried, I mean, I left my ask on, I guess y'all are not looking at that, y'all are looking at this one. But, I mean, I left, salary's the same because it's, and just like I came in here that first year, said I need agents to work more than a year to show growth and impact, and once they show impact and they're here more than a year, we can ask for, for that, so salaries are the same.
Did you hire, you did hire?
Yes.
Okay, the person.
The person has accepted the job, but the person has not resigned publicly.
Gotcha. So that's fair. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Don't worry about it.
But I will email you three because I, I do believe stakeholders need to tell them, hey, so. So, uh, now I'm very excited. It is a local. And it is a person that has a child that started fourth grade 4H meetings two weeks ago and is tickled, and I honestly believe that's gonna help keep that person in place and grow the program because they're gonna grow it with their child in place. Uh, it's, it's gonna be a very good fit. I may not have to hire that one again. Um, it would be nice, but yeah, that, that's happened. But yeah, I, I went up and traveled because that is never gonna change, and I think, um, our gaps in, and it's hard for me to look at June because we way past that now, aren't we, Cindy?
That's when I have to start this process, though, so.
Um, because those numbers are not reflective of where we actually are sitting right now. We're pretty close to being done in all buckets. Due to movement and due to more travel with more people in place than when we requested those budgets in years past.
Okay, is the garbage pickup, is that something?
So, I, that can be an ask, um.
I just knew it wasn't anything that.
So that, that was added to this, correct? Because of it being in place over at the facility already? I don't know, do you know?
Hmm, I think that was a number that you put in.
Did I put that in? Well, because it's being done already right now, so I don't know what budget that's coming from and if that just needs to, uh, be associated with us.
I'd, we'd like to find that out from Eric.
But it's, yeah.
If it's being done by us, if we want to hear it exposed, so.
Okay. I mean, it's a dumpster.
Okay.
That's in place.
Here's the one that was there with the.
And for the learning center. But that's the approximate.
Is that, is that what y'all need? Is that dumpster?
But that dumpster would be great to leave in place.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And there, there, your senate too.
Did the health department put one in here?
I don't know if the health department did. We've, we've got one, but.
Oh, okay.
We've got one. Actually, wait, let's see. As of the end of September, this one between us and the conference center is ours now. I think.
Community.
No, yeah, the community center. Um, Pigma had that one until the end of September, and then I think Eric was gonna take care of this, getting it transferred over to us and just leaving it in place.
Figured they did have a lot of stuff that might be the, medical stuff to dispose of.
Yeah.
The learning center seems to be throwing, I mean, utilizing it pretty sufficiently to.
They are.
Okay.
That, that, I mean, it's, yeah, it was a joint use anyway.
But that, is that interfering with y'all?
No, 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 not at all. But I'm just saying, it's, and I know at our old location, we were having to have, um, oh, gosh, his name right now.
Steven.
Uh, no, well.
Bobby Dell.
Bobby Dell.
He would pick it up.
Oh, okay.
He would pick it up, but not very consistently, so that, yeah, I mean, and he's delightful. Um, but it wasn't like it was a weekly thing, so there was bugs and lots of other issues, so. Yeah, keeping trash, especially having the kitchens, it will be wise to keep the dumpster and as long as that. And I don't know that it has to stay on the same rotation of weekly pickup. I mean, that's a, that's a y'all's contract sort of thing, but I mean, if it needs to be associated under us, I understand that.
Okay.
Um, but that is the approximate price that she believed was associated with, with that. So, and then repairs and maintenance, simply because we are gonna have to hire out a, a cleaner. I mean, we, we're keeping our own spaces clean, but as far as a, and I don't know that it's gonna have to be on a super routine basis, but it's a, it's a large building that needs to be mopped and taken care of and that sort of thing. And of course, I would love to work with who, the local folks that everybody had in place. I think everybody seemed to be very happy with who that was, and they had a routine and that sort of thing. I think local's appropriate, but, um, but that's where that is coming from. The telephone guys did say, if y'all chose to update the phone system, it would probably be cheaper for y'all. And I know that's an associated price that's kind of built in over the years for what we have in place, but, um, he seems to think a, upgrading the phone system would be cheaper. And I don't know how to go about that process or when to, it's working, but.
What I would suggest, if, if y'all don't mind doing it, is who you're talking to there?
Mm-hmm.
Just get them to give you a quote.
Okay. It's ATC, I mean, it's ATC.
I think Justin Davenport or Alan Davenport, or Justin. Justin Bramlett. Justin Bramlett or Alan Davenport are usually the ones that we deal with, um.
Yeah.
But that's, that's where it is. If y'all had certain questions about it, I mean, I, I, my ask were the capital requests, in my opinion, and that was to keep the twelve thousand. We have constantly been going and checking out certain vans, and I'm simply just not, as you said, when I get it, that's what I'm getting. So I'm not gonna spend the money if it's not gonna be
Yeah.
checked out by folks and be something that we can use for several years to make the trip to Rock Eagle six times. But I, I have a couple that are being looked at as of speak. I would be hopeful to use that before the end of the year. But yeah, I didn't ask for any more. I do think it's gonna cost us more than that, and I have the small plot that I told you about that was reserved for. I can go straight to it. And I, I know we talked about it at some point of who needs to do, y'all said get a bill of sale and bring it to you sort of thing, but is there anybody else that needs to be involved in that? Just, that's how I started the process? We talked about that later.
Well, we, yeah, we can talk about, we cross that bridge when we come to it, but we would just need an invoice or a bill of sale or something to, you know, to pay from. And then, do you expect that to be the total cost?
No, I think we're gonna have to put a few more.
I guess we get into, um, how do you think it would have to be titled?
It's gonna need to be titled until the other.
Yeah, y'all, y'all have all the title. To UGA extension or what, so, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And add it to your fleet.
It would just be the normal, we'll just add it and add it to the internet to get the title.
Okay. Titled for y'all and used for us, yep, sort of thing. The washer dryer hookup, I think, is a relatively easy fix, probably gonna even be cheaper than what I put on there, um, from folks that I'm hearing from, but I'll get official quotes. Is that on a, a separate page, but I don't know where you.
It's on the capital, it's on the capital worksheet, under UGA, I think I've got it, UGA extension.
Right. I just didn't, I didn't see a washer dryer.
Oh, I've, I've got it lumped together.
Okay.
Um.
Under building remodel.
Building remodel, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So washer dryer hookup?
Yes, I mean, they have the one.
The hallway.
Create that doorway to get that bathroom not entering into the kitchen classroom. I just.
And then remove two sections of interior. Is that, that waiting room in the?
That's that waiting room.
Yeah, I just lumped them together. The one category for the vehicle and then the other for the building-related things. They also have a copy release, but it's minimal. I've got to plug that number in. I just haven't done that.
Yeah, okay.
It's minimal.
Sorry, don't, forgive me, I have a roofer, um, putting roof on my mom's house and he's found that issue, so he was like, you want us to keep going and do it? I was like, yeah, so I apologize.
No, that's very good. But that's it. I don't know if you have questions. We do need to get, um, that is the wrong word, not Steven, but Eric, thank you, to come look at that electrical water.
Has it been fixed yet?
Mm-hmm. That's okay.
No, it's not.
And we're not using the room, so.
What about something in the ceiling?
And, and that, but yeah, that, and that, hopefully before.
Well, that's a safety issue.
Yes, and right now the doors are shut and no one's accessing, so that was our way of.
I'll have a conversation with him.
Because we just needed to, we needed to move in and get settled and that will happen when it happens.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with Eric about it.
Um, yeah. And I think I put on there just to change those bathroom doors in the lobby. I get why they had them that way.
We gotta lock.
Yeah, it just needed a, a regular, like, when you go into the bathroom, you can lock yourself. Um, because right now you have to remember to take the key out because there's no way to lock it from the inside.
Right.
So people could, yeah, so.
Okay.
And, uh, really, realistically, that's gonna be people that bring soil in and have driven here a long time or something that need to go in, or children with.
Do y'all have access to put in a work order for Eric?
Yes.
Do you have one for that?
We, we have not. You want me to put in that one?
He's adamant about, he needs work orders, so.
I can do that.
And that also, uh, starts the clock ticking. And do the same on that, uh, outlet.
But yes, we are very happy where we are. That worked out very well.
You were very patient and I appreciate it. Took a while.
Well, I appreciate you.
How many people, including kids, lead y'all's serve in there?
Well, not every kid that we serve will enter the doors.
Right.
At any given time, but, um, realistically, if a master gardener program is held there, we could have fifty people.
Right.
Um, if I've got a beginning class going on, you're gonna have ten, fifteen, twenty people. For safety reasons, we're gonna limit it to twelve kids cooking. The homeschool group, the first meeting was twenty-five kids scrunched in a little bitty tiny room. And that wasn't everybody that I expect to come, so. That, it, it, that, it, that classroom's gonna fill up, but, um, I'm about to start DPP, um, Deputy's Prevention Program, T2. That's gonna have classes of ten to twelve several times a week for a year.
You know, at one time, and sometime in the last ten years, we were one of the highest counties of juvenile deputies, or there we still have them there.
Mm-hmm. That program is not for juveniles, and I understand why now, doing the training.
Teaching the parents.
It, it, you can teach, yes, I mean, just juveniles don't have the.
Sure, but they're, you're teaching the parents.
Teaching the parents, mm-hmm. But yeah, I mean, at any given time, we may have ten, twenty people in there with various programs, but upwards of that, depending upon what the topic is or ability to. I mean, if, if things overshoot those numbers, we obviously have access to the other community resources too with the basement library and that sort of thing, but yeah, to me, if you have that building, you should have people in the building, so that is, that is my goal, to have people in that building and to know why it's there.
I don't have any other questions, honey. I don't either. Good.
Well, this was a nice visit.
Thank you.
I'm sure you have a busy day, so...
I do. We're, we're having a retirement, I guess I should say that. Oh, are you? Thank you. We did lose funding for, oh, well, federal funding got pulled throughout for the SNAP education program that Becca has done here for ten years. UGA, I didn't ask locally, I didn't, I mean, because y'all never, it was a grant funded process. But UGA did the right thing. We have a new associate dean. I'm very impressed with him. He's talking a lot of reality right now. He canceled our big winter conference that they pull every agent in the state to Rock Eagle for three days, um, for lots of training and camaraderie. The camaraderie is great, but if your budget doesn't support that, um, and it's gonna put you in a bind, you don't do it. And so he canceled it. He said, we can train online. Um, we see each other. We need to do local programming. That's who's paying for us to be there. We need to be in our counties. Um, I like him a lot, but Becca is, has been funded, Becca Pritchett has been funded for, she, she was caught up in, she needed to get to sixty, so she needed fourteen more days. And UGA is paying to have her here till October seventeenth. So, um, I'm, I'm excited about that. They did the right thing. She's pleased as punch. We're having a little, retirement drop-in if y'all wanna come say hello. She has, I would love to see our local numbers over the years prior to me getting here. I, I do know, and I have no problem saying, we've met our goals and our quotas every year since I've been here. We've been the only state SNAP entity to do that, um, of the twelve across the state. And that's, we had to reinvent the wheel on some of the things and I had to go out and find the right places to get Becca in front of the groups, but we met our numbers every year. Um, but I would love to see the overarching numbers of people that she met to do low income nutrition education. And some of, that grant provided a lot of resources, the incentive things.
To, for them to come in.
For them to, for them to come in and do the program and then they had tools to use in their kitchen or other, they had some nice things that were given out and our food pantry was one that we, we put a lot of that through those types of resources. So, I'd love to see our overall numbers. That hasn't come back to me yet, but um, I do know that she has made a huge impact in ten years in this community, so, um, and it's gonna be a missed part of our team, so, anyway. May I enjoy the rest of your day?
Thanks, Mary.
Sorry, I threw there, just telling me something about the roof, but shouldn't I, I might not know what this do fixes, Jason, with Rain Man Roofing.
I think they can get the, uh, the parlor deal out of...
Oh, he knows about that one.
Yeah, that's gonna even get that out of the way too, while they don't. We got my tissue there.
Well, I have to go get another fix. Would anybody like a Diet Pepsi?
I have none, thank you.
I was there this morning, but thank you.
Can I go be far enough so you don't have to walk in there? Appreciate it, but I'm gonna have to walk in there anyway.
And I'm, well, you probably gotta do something you can't go for. Please verify you are a demon. Yeah, these times I'm like, well, is that probably a label? I'm logging into our MedCore account and it says verify you are a demon.
How does that, have you slid the head on that place?
It's just a box to check, luckily. Just gotta check the box.
Same, same. Why we got all these yadda things on Mike?
Well, because that's a, um, a discussion that we, we might wanna have later on. You know, the golf course is handled in a separate fund altogether. It is not made with a general fund. Mike has got the golf course to where it's actually headed its own way. So, with that said, um, there's, we could, if y'all wanted to, some of the capital projects that he's requested could actually come out of his golf course budget rather than having to come out of the SPOSS money. So that's, that could be a move that we can make from SPOSS over to, you know, we can move those budgeted items out of SPOSS, out of the SPOSS request over to the golf course request if we, you know, need to trim on the SPOSS budget. And, you know, it probably makes sense to just do some of that anyway. Since the golf course has the funding to do that.
He just wanted to switch it from the gas power to electric cars.
Yeah, he's been real, he's been real pleased with other electric cars.
And I don't know, I don't know the details about the money on that. I don't, I don't, I guess he trades the gas into the electric or are they giving the deal? I don't know.
And there was a, a lease thing that I know we wrote too early and had to repay.
We will, I have confirmed
Okay.
that, um, he and I have had that discussion. We would not be in that situation because the carts would be coming from the same, they'd just be coming from the same company.
Okay, that's good.
It would just be a swap out. Is my understanding. He can explain more on that, but
Yes.
I've confirmed that we...
That was not gonna happen again.
That was not gonna happen again.
We're the least expensive around and I'm, I don't know anything about that market, but...
Golf, like golf?
I mean, I don't know anything about the, being competitive with fees versus...
I thought he did increase it. It could have been my last year that he did, if he hasn't since.
Let's ask you, 'cause I think, I think we're a bargain right now.
I'm not surprised that his beer and wine sales, is he, is he saying that's all he's done or is that profit? Do you know that's any beer and wine sales is that a profit?
Is there, is there lumber down here on beer?
There will be, there's a revenue line and an expenditure line. You have to net those and find out if there's real profit.
Since we got the twelve farm.
Come here, Remy.
Speaking of you.
Uh-oh.
Come on.
Yeah, we, we got questions. I hope I can answer.
I want you to make more money. No, I'm kidding. Are you tired?
It's busy this morning.
Is it?
It is.
Was it yesterday or when was it you had that other big company?
Uh, Wes Stacy's last week.
Oh, okay, that's long, I have to remember that.
I saw the chamber's gonna be one now from Daniel, right there.
We're supposed to have one yesterday, the lead, and the guy did a really good job, I thought, last year, a really good job. He cut grief from the leads, from people that leaked and makes the pay off. I won't do it anymore. He had a good turn. He did good, I thought.
He did not have it yesterday?
I called him a couple of weeks ago, left a message, didn't hear anything. Called him last Tuesday, left another message, Wednesday.
Oh, you had reserved it and didn't?
Yeah, I didn't hear anything, so I took it off the sheet. I had to get golf out there. It cost money. We got Gilmore Aldridge the twenty-second.
Everybody's going.
Jay, oh, yes, that's my, that's my guy. Stacy was saying, he was saying that, uh, on the signs that they sell, you know, the sponsorship signs, the amount was twenty grand. That's just on the signs. We're gonna go up a little bit on our fees too.
You mean your general plan fees?
No, not that, the tournament fees, but I think, I think the, the general fees too need to, need to bump.
We're a bargain.
We are a bargain and I get, I get told that often, often, by people that come in there saying, from out of town, you know you could get one. So, whatever you, whatever you think, well...
Well, it's better to make three nickels than one dime, but we don't leave a whole bunch of money on the table either. If we're too cheap, that's good.
Yeah, the, see, the members, the memberships went up three years ago, I think it was.
Well, that's about, I don't remember.
They were five fifty. We went to six and a quarter. Uh, and caught zero grief out of that. They didn't, they knew they were getting a deal. But what I, what I'm looking at now, I'm looking at the, the ports and everything, trying to get the numbers, but the most, the people that play the most seeing, 'cause you can tell everything they spend yearly. So, if you come in there and you play three days a week or whatever, you remember, he'll tell me everything you've spent. And doing some research with some other places, they've got a fee where you just come in and pay one fee. And you remember, you paid one fee and you don't pay anything, you know, for that card to, to play. It may be twenty-five hundred bucks, it could be twenty-seven hundred bucks. But you gotta be sure when you do it, when you set it, that you gonna come out to the good. Very few people, there's been several ask for it, but very few people have, have gave me a, some kind of an idea of what they think it should be. So, but you gotta be sure you're not gonna lose money on that, so... Maybe just stick with what we're doing, 'cause they're not complaining about it. I mean, it's ten dollars for uh, nine, oh, twenty or eighteen, if you remember.
The fact that playing six would be fine.
But to have to pay six point five. We need to, we should be happy with where we're at though, because I'm a member of that Club Managers Association and that's in the country, but they've got meetings around here, you know, Georgia, Alabama and all that, Florida. But I went to a couple and then when I don't go, I get on the Zoom and I'll listen and we talk and it's good to hear that people have the same problems that we have, the same issues. But, 'cause golf's grung, I mean, it's, it's grung. But to hear them say that they're struggling to make ends meet, they're writing checks that they came for. And they're fighting just to break even. So, I look at ours, after me and Utah, I'm thinking, man, we're doing, we're doing good. Most, most golf courses don't pay much. Some of them do, but most of them don't.
Any golf that can go up on just the, not the, not the memberships, but just the ones that come in? 'Cause what, is that sixty?
Sixty through the week, sixty Friday, Saturday and Sunday, fifty-five Monday through Thursday. See, let me rephrase that, sixty Friday, Saturday, Sunday, pan holidays, any holiday, wherever day that's offered.
When you think often, I know, all your family does.
That's like, I mean, it's like the deer prices.
What can we go up to and not lose any business? Where's that magic number?
I don't think we're gonna, I don't think we're gonna lose any business, John. I really, I really, I mean, obviously you go up to in the hundreds, you're gonna lose, you're, you're gonna lose, but, you know, I think...
Seventy-five.
He's looking away with seventy-five.
I would think so.
It's like a hidden number too. People think seventy-five, seventy-five.
They don't complain when they come in there.
Well, if you did, and I'm a big expert, I'm just asking, well, if you did seventy-five through the week, just that was it. On fix five, on sixty, seventy-five for every day.
For every day. We got your senior day. We do offer a senior day. It's forty-five.
And it probably encourages more people to come in during the week by having a discounted...
It does, it, it does. Through the week, most places are cheaper. Through the week, most places are cheaper. Then you hit them on the weekend.
And that's where a lot of your tourists, our locals know they don't come on the weekends.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, or, or they play first, or, we start at seven o'clock and the locals, we call them locals, they get those, I mean, they know if they wanna get out, they wanna get back. So their team off at seven and they're done. Their day's done.
Talking about possibly raising the prices for daily use at the golf course.
Rule one.
You know what rule one is?
No.
I don't care. I throw one, I don't care.
Now we're gonna throw a fish in, don't get in there.
Now I can.
Now you can't. You get, go to the lakes and, and...
Easily.
Seventy-five?
Yeah, it's just kind of a... Seventy-five bucks.
Like I say, they, they come from all over. I mean, they're coming from all, it's not just Atlanta anymore. It's, it's not just Florida anymore. It used to be just Florida, you know, and around there. It's, I, I mean, I had two groups in there this year already from Iowa. And big groups, you know, Indiana, Illinois, all of them.
They're a red to the motion, buddy.
Ellen J from Iowa. I mean, just, when you talk to these people, why are you, why, why? Yeah, 'cause I like to, I like to ask them why.
Yeah, what did they say?
We, the one group said, we saw a cabin we liked, so we booked it and they drove. And they played golf.
They had all their clubs in prep.
And they had, they had three vehicles, they had three vehicles and a van. There were sixteen of them, I think.
This is an aside, but how's that guy doing, whoever it is on the short term, the hotel that you...
The logs. Last I heard, it was for sale. And he had a contract. That one fell through and then he has another for the same amount. He's too high.
His rental fee's too high.
His rentals too high. The big units, he's wanting three fifty a night. Minimum two nights. I think it's a seventy-five dollar cleanup fee. You can get Airbnb cheaper.
Yeah, that's a, it's just a one room.
Yeah, well, no, the big units have two.
Have two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms. Who sleeps six, it does the couch, the couch and all that. The lower units are two fifty. They just got two small bedrooms. All of them have a kitchen. But, but you're, you know, I tried to send people over there 'cause the groups will call me and ask to have, you know, go run over there, but they don't stay there because it's, it's too much money. They can get, you know, twelve of them can go in on a house and all stay in the same place. He hasn't figured that out yet. He's got a lot of money in it, I know that.
Did that new owner do a lot more since the last retreat people or whatever they did?
Oh, that, that, Hard Chan? No, he, no, he didn't do anything.
Hard Chan didn't do any of that investment. Did, um, I thought he did something from the previous owner, a lot of owners in that place.
Yeah, uh, Norris and then, what was her name, Charlie? Yeah, uh, Norris and then, what was her name, Charlie that had Bob and Dicky? Bob and Dicky, they had it after that, after that, and they did good. Uh, they were, cause, you know, it was cheaper, a whole lot cheaper. But, yeah, they had people stay there all the time. I've had one group stay there.
What is your, that's a question, the thing about raising the fees, I think they go to your board with.
Will, yeah. And we, we, we have talked about it, we didn't, I told them we were, I figured we would talk about it, so we meet next month, I think.
Speaking for myself, I think we're leaving a little on the tape.
They don't, they, they say, they, they don't come in and ever complain and say it's too high. I mean, everything I hear, everything they buy, from a hot dog to a hamburger to a beer, these prices, man, I can't believe these prices. Yeah, so.
Which explains to me that, um, beer wine sales, actual, is that?
That was, can I chime in?
No.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, that number was just through June. The biggest, he, there's a lot more beer and wine sold there. July, August, September, those numbers are not reflected here because this is just through June, so that number.
Years of date, right now, we sold twenty-six thousand in beer.
Okay. In beer, or in wine?
Just in beer, yeah.
So that number will
Beer and wine.
jump up.
Cause you're not selling much wine, right?
Yeah, we're.
This says a thousand.
Yeah. I have, I have to start this process.
Oh, I, uh, uh, this is nothing, nothing on you saying, I was just questioning.
I know.
Last month, month of February, we sold twenty-seven hundred in beer.
And you still got a decent profit in there even with the price, right? I wonder what they charge wholesale.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, you get, I mean, depending on what, how many you have, the more you get, cheaper they are. I try to get this seven, every time I order, that way they're cheaper.
Um, and tell us about golf carts, on the switch.
The switch is going to the electric.
Yeah.
Uh, I've got fifteen of them, we did them last year, and they're awesome. They are, everybody comes in and wants them, they're awesome. The, the ones we have are just, they're COVID cart.
A what?
A COVID cart, they're made during COVID, and Easy Go is great, they get up there, they fix them. And I'm never down carts, but they're starting to get, I mean, they've just been, they've been used. And they're not penalizing us for getting out of that early. Cause it is, it is, I've got the lease right here, and I want y'all to look at it. But they're not gonna penalize you, they know the issues we've had, I've got a spreadsheet of everything we've done to every cart. And email it to them. And Cam, he's, he's the southeast guy, he calls and he came up and we talked about it, and he knows there's issues with them and they're gonna make it right, so. No, there's no penalty, we just, with these, there's nothing to really mix. There's no brakes, there's no engine, battery's guaranteed, five years for, a hundred percent for five years, there's nothing that can go wrong. Yeah, we might have put a power on one, but you gotta do that anyway.
There's no brakes?
Yeah.
They're break fast, that work?
You, you pull up a hill, and I can, welcome to come out and I'll take you up a hill, but you can pull up a hill like that right there and stop.
And it'll just?
The cart will stop, and you'll hear a click. And that should, should, will not roll.
What about if you're this way?
Either way. Either way, they're, I mean, they're really, and you can set, you can set your speeds.
Your maximum speed?
Yeah, mine, the one they gave me, uh, which I'd say they gave me, they just, I use one all the time, and I don't let, I don't let it go out, it's the one I use when I'm on the course. I got it where it'll, it'll go for fast. But the others are set at twelve. And, and the holdback speed, you can put your foot on the gas, go down the hill, and you don't have to let off it, cause it's not gonna go so fast. There's no way you can get, cause I see them now, these, these kids, they go down these hills, wind up, just seeing what they can, play bumper cars and stuff, and it stops all that.
That's so great, and the gas car did not have that option?
No.
So great.
No, so, much safer.
Yeah.
You know, and that's what I, cause a lot of people right now are giving them, that don't know a whole lot about golf number one and number two, they're from Flatland. And, and they don't know how to drive a golf cart here.
In rounds.
In rounds, yeah.
And then you say you can get three eighteens out of them?
One of them went three eighteens, but it barely made it back. I mean, barely, it was at two percent, barely made it back. Guaranteed to be two rounds, it'll, it'll go two and a half rounds easy. Which with that many of them, I wouldn't never have to worry about a cart, you know, going out that much. So they make, the chargers come with them.
The trucks could run?
They do, um, now, they make a quick charger, which I'll probably get a couple of those, just in case we run out, you know? Uh, one gets low and we can just quick plug it up and charge it if we need it, so. But they're, they're very good calling, and Easy Go's been service part of it, there's Yamaha, you know, the guy out of those, strictly because of service. Those guys are great, cause you get to call them and everything.
From a risk management standpoint, this thing about the brakes is just that. Somewhere else doesn't have that brake. That makes a big difference, have you been on that cart and then you go somewhere else and you have to remember. And it's huge.
It does, but a, a member.
Three times as much to play there.
Yeah.
A member came in and he takes the electric all the time. Well, they were updating, Easy Go came up, there's an update, so when John came out there, they were updating cars and he couldn't get one. He goes down to one, and you don't like saying, I said it's great. He gets out of the car thinking it was, cause he's used to the electric. Didn't hurt it, it just rolled down the hill, but that's dangerous.
The, the little bit of money we're, I mean, it's big money, but it's not if you have an accident or something.
I know, and we've had.
Your risk manager spoke to that, so consider yourself spoken. See, I'm, I'm still having to wear this, cause I don't have it. I'm still waiting.
You got, you got, I was, I watched you buy them.
Can you stop, and he's got some shirts, I always wanted a visor or a hat, I was over there in my head. I can't put in anything.
Did you get fat ones? You get fat ones with you?
I think I did. XL or two X?
The shop looks so great.
It does, looks wonderful. I'll put this thing on vibrate, so you won't have to listen to it anymore.
You're still selling quite a bit, right? I know you're keeping the prices.
Yeah, I mean, the shirts, shirts, I got the winter stuffs in, I haven't put it out yet. That's, that's a big order, about three grand, I think, but it's pullovers. Got some nicer ones, you know, I like these, this is my favorite one, it's just a thin one.
Yeah.
Uh, but I got a little heavier ones, and you'd be surprised at the hood. It's the regular old hood, but you can't keep them, you can't keep them, they cost us twenty-five dollars, I sell them for fifty.
Wow.
And, and it's just a regular old cotton hood, and they buy them just as fast as they.
You know, the economics of all that though is, they're up there and they're having fun, and they're not priced, there's no price point. And it's not Walmart's, so.
How many does it?
A logo ball, they want something with a logo ball, I've got a logo hat, and I buy seventy-two at a time. And it seems like every time we, we get the invoice and get it paid, I'm calling Eugene, getting it paid. You know, there, it's just a dollar structure, nine-dollar hat with our logo on it, and then, I've got, you probably saw the rack over there, and I've got different colors and the logo ball, they're sitting right there, they buy those for five hundred pieces. I've got a poker chip, the logo, anything with a logo, anything with that logo on it, they're gonna buy.
Nice, good.
Well, I would if you had it myself. I'll get you a shirt, John.
You're gonna head back to golf courses?
I'll have, I'll box it up for you.
I was just thinking that I would not possibly pay those prices for those things. But then it occurs to me that I have paid twenty dollars to buy a five-dollar lure before.
So I guess it's all a matter of perspective.
If you add on water, that twenty dollars doesn't sound much.
That's right.
Just like.
To your point.
Yeah, that's like golf balls, my Cleveland rep came by a couple of weeks ago. And he said, with his spreadsheet, and it's a, it's a twenty, twenty-eight dollars for a dozen. And we have sold, of just that ball was five hundred and ninety-two dozen. Of just that ball.
Five hundred and ninety-two dozen?
Does. The, there's a noodle that's a fifteen-pack for twenty-five dollars. That I will bet you that, so almost double that.
Well. Are you only have hooks in them?
They lose those balls too, though, out of the woods.
They buy, they buy two of those, it's like I say, it's a fifteen-pack, and they buy two, two of those at a time. Cause they know they're gonna lose them, and they don't wanna hunt them.
And you got kids going out in the woods, right, collecting all those balls?
What, what I do with those is, in the winter, or when it cools off, because, I've been there how long then? Over eleven, almost twelve years, I think? And I bought range balls one time, and that was when I first got there.
That's great.
So I'll send the guys, when, when it's wet and stuff, I'll give them all, I'll go loads of base down here, I'll get a five-gallon bucket. And eat one of them, they'll come back to us for it.
And they know where they're going.
They know where they're going, they do it every year. I've got a wooden bin at the maintenance down there, that'll probably hold twenty thousand golf balls. So when we get low on range balls, let's go down.
Time to go to, get the woods.
I'm not buying range balls, cause those woods are full of.
You got a hook bucket and a slice bucket, you don't.
What did we make on the range, just the range this year? Is that? Just the range alone, right now, we've made fifty-five thousand.
God, hell.
Just the range, and that's no money invested at all.
How much of those tokens?
The tokens, how much they cost?
No, how much more did they pay for a token?
Five, five per token.
And how many do they get?
They get, for one token, you get thirty balls, for two tokens, you get six. Five and ten.
I wish all of them came in and said, we make them.
Yeah.
But you know, Jim's talking about how planning is only self-sufficient, and I, I like that a lot. But what I really like is now that wiping is self-sufficient.
That's what I was telling, it's earlier you were, you were in the back, but it's amazing how many golf courses don't make money.
Yeah.
And, and how they struggle to break even, you know, and we, we, we've been there.
Well, I remember when the county first took it over, we tried to put it out to bid, you remember that?
Yeah.
No interest whatsoever in it. But it was in pretty bad shape at that point.
You've made an investment, that's great.
Well, it used to be a burden, you know, it used to, it used to be in the paper all the time, people calling you, calling y'all about this or that, you know? Now, it's an asset, it's healthy, so. It's, uh, we got work to do, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. When you have that much play, things get tore up.
Yeah.
Boy, I'm serious, if, if you could, if you could increase revenue, we could take some of this out and put it into him and his M and O, right?
On the capital?
Yeah.
It's capital, yeah, and Mike and I have talked about that, the possibility of, you know, taking some of the, I don't think Charlie was in here when we had that conversation before Mike got here, but the, on Mike's budget sheet, there's several spaces that are highlighted in yellow, and I just did that mostly for myself, to be honest, just as a reminder, but when we see what the squash budget looks, or what the capital budget looks like, we could easily, some of the capital projects that Mike has requested for twenty-six could, in my opinion, easily come out of his golf course budget, rather than coming out of the capital budget, but also the money's there, we could.
It kind of all depends, because we're looking at, right now, cutting, having to cut a couple of million out of the general budget. And I don't know what we look on, I think we're looking.
Well, but Mike's budget is separate from the general fund, it doesn't mingle with the general fund, it's its own, it's, it is its own fund, it's on back-to-back, and it's everything.
What's that called?
It's an enterprise enterprise. So it, you know, general fund, I refer to that as his maintenance and operations budget, but it is not mingled with the other general fund budgets for the other departments in the county, because it's set up as an enterprise.
Yeah, I have a problem remembering that, I think all of them, me and Jim.
Well, there's, uh, too much to try to remember. It would be an option.
Great call.
Great, would be an option.
It's good to have a little fallback out.
One, yeah. Thank you for what you've done to make that happen, cause you lost time for you.
He puts in a lot of hours.
He does.
Well, we close two days a year.
His wife had to move up the street just so that she could see him.
She probably be loving.
She hangs out out there.
Oh, yeah, she, she had it, but it. She married into that thirty years ago, she's used to that.
She loves it, I'm sure.
Yeah.
She loves her, she's like, out there.
She probably wants, probably wants me to be away, you know?
Well, I'm glad she's closer, my daughter.
Yeah, she's, we had to, on another note, we had to put our sixteen-year-old doll down. So that's been the last two weeks, I've been trying to keep her going.
Busy.
And she doesn't wanna be at home, she doesn't wanna be at home.
Yeah.
That's the toughest thing I've ever.
Was it Brittany's thing?
Been there.
Or she was Brittany's?
It is. She had a stroke in Will and I, and it was, it was, she was not gonna be better, but it was, the work, she's constantly on the go. Which is good, but.
She's gonna have a, well, y'all are not gonna have a grandma.
We are.
She'll be distracted, gonna have a keeper, yeah. You might not see her at the golf course much.
And that's fine, too, she's, it's fine.
Where do they get to, they live close?
Atlanta.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, she, December the twenty-eighth is when it's due.
Boy or girl?
They're not gonna find that.
Oh, okay. We had one of those, they can find out.
Why not? Baby shower, I think Saturday, she's gotta go to, and, and she's like, she's already got stuff, so she just got the, I think, whether you call it even wear it on a boy or a girl.
Neutral, neutral. Gender neutral.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's fun, congratulations.
Yeah, it'll be, I asked them if they could time that any worse, cause that baby's born on Christmas Day, they're gonna, they're gonna wish they hadn't have a birthday.
Yeah, yeah, they'll have to have one of those, um, half birthdays, right, in June, on June twenty-fifth, celebrate the half birthday.
Yeah.
Keep their wife in prison.
The, the paving right there's, you know, we haven't done that much, but I gotta add parking, that's for a parking lot. Up on that lot that we bought on that side, we're gonna add that parking lot up into the road, cause they're, they're parking over there next to grass, they're parking over there now. Um, parking up toward the maintenance and out in the road, and so we gotta, we gotta have parking.
So that cart path paving is that too?
That's, that's part of that, too, I'm gonna do some cart paths too, there's, we always do cart paths, so. So we gotta have, we gotta have more parking.
Yeah.
Didn't you say the other day that you get asked a lot about, um, food?
We do. And I knew you was gonna bring that up.
Well, it's just such a
It's.
whole different beast, there it is.
It is, and I, did she mention that, about restaurant?
No, I haven't.
I could not tell you how many phone calls, but me, just I'd answer, want to know if we had a restaurant. And do we want that? I don't know.
I'd ask you, I'd say that can, I would, it is, I, my family's in the restaurant business, my life, it is a lot.
I wouldn't want them.
It is a, it's a lot.
I wouldn't want to be a, at all, but you might, me and Sandy were talking, just in our office one day. I wouldn't want to be a, at all, but you might, me and Sandy were talking, just in our office one day, and passing there. You know, you might get somebody to, to do it.
That might want a second location, you know, somebody that's already got a restaurant, that maybe could like to have a second location somewhere with a limited menu. But, like you said, I can't imagine.
Didn't we have somebody do that for a while, maybe?
All, all that side over there, we had Jerry, Jerry Davis, you know, and, and Jerry could have made a lot of money if he would have had his hours and worked and opened up. When it was supposed to open. You know, he didn't. But, yeah, it didn't work. But, I mean, I sell hot dogs, hamburgers, and I've got snacks. And it's made, and we're making money out of it.
And really, I don't have all the department restrictions and all the, all the other stuff that goes with it.
I don't know.
Way, 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 all that.
Maybe, maybe a few years down the road or something, but, cause I'd say it's a lot of work. But I don't have time to be looking at it, that's for sure.
I think you'd have a whole lot of waste.
I do, and your profits in alcohol.
I mean, we have, we have waste in what we sell, what we sell, hot dogs and stuff, we have waste.
Minimal cost.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, but you still have, you still hate throwing them away, you know, but you, you got to, um. Yeah, but what we waste is nothing compared to what, what something like that would.
Really, the real profit's in the alcohol, so.
It is.
Even in a restaurant, that's.
Especially if food costs.
And really, I don't know, I mean, it's not like you wanna build a country club atmosphere out there, and so, really, for a golf course, pro shop, restaurant, I don't really know. You know, you've got hamburgers, hot dogs, snacks.
Yeah, I mean, we've got everything they need. We've got everything they need, except a biscuit in the morning. And I've got, I've got drinks for the ones that come hung over, so. Bachelor, bachelor, bachelor crowds come in in the morning.
The Gatorade power.
It's a, it's a.
Liquid IV.
Flash IV, they call it, it's in a, it's in a different square bottle, and it is amazing, how many of them.
Really?
Is that, yeah.
Flash IV?
Flash IVs, they're supposed to be a rapid hydration. And there'll be a couple of them, and they get, coming after turn.
Then I come back for a beer.
Good enough, and then I'll come right back for lunch.
You know, you know, stop the coolers. They don't, they don't bring their own coolers out there. As far as policing their own beer, you're never gonna stop it.
Yeah, they throw in their bag, whatever.
They, they, they got golf bags now, that, that have.
They built them coolers.
And, and you're just, and I can't go through their bags, I can't go through their stuff, so, they're gonna sneak them, and it's not all of them, they're gonna sneak them out there, I mean, part of it, but. But coolers, they don't bring their own cooler now, if it's a diabetic or something like that, then, you know, we let that always go, but, um. We got coolers on the cart, we have ice, they'll hold six beers, which is plenty, you know? If they want four, it's ours, it's ours.
Great. Good work.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. The rest of this stuff is, is, I mean, the, the turf at the drive-in range is something I did wanna, um. That's, the charter, I think, being you got that, that was one of the first things, me and you bought years ago.
Yes.
It's been there a long, long time, and they start to tear. Uh, and this is, this is better, that turf there, it won't accept a tee. So when they want to hit a wood or a drive or tee something up, you can't, you can't put it in that turf. What I'm getting, you can put tees in and everything, so it's six foot wide, and we're gonna have it all the way across the top up there. Much better.
I can't do what you're making, that's awesome.
Yeah, that, yeah, we'll pay for that. The, that, uh, the storage where we, the cart, the cart bar, the cart storage, you know, with these new carts, with the, with the new battery, they want those, they just want them enclosed. Like, cause the batteries will last longer. You don't want that in the weather and that cold, and it needs that anyway. That way, if they have, I'm surprised we haven't had one get by them.
Yeah, do you have enough power and electrical?
Yeah, uh, I talked to, I talked to EMC about it, and they said, if we, you know, we were to get these new ones, that they might come in, put another transformer in, just a little bigger one, outside right there. But yeah, we got, it's, they had electric there before, believe it or not.
Gotcha.
And it was old, the older ones, and they just, they didn't make it, they didn't last. They taught you that one, so. But everybody's down there, but we need that. The parking lot, the culvert there, is in front of the range. I don't know if y'all seen it or not, but when you walk over toward the back of the pro shop, if you look down, the drive-in range, the front of the drive-in range, T's got a hole, it is this prun right here. It's gonna part, the culvert, it's gonna part, it's metal pipe, it's gonna part. Every time it rains, washes that out. It's gonna wash the tee out, we're gonna fix it. So you gotta cut the asphalt and put new pipe in. So, and that's gonna be a job. The others, this equipment is, we're gonna get some utility vehicles, mowers, we'll get two mowers, and a trap rack. Which we haven't bought any equipment in a while, so. And then find me some help.
Inside your post.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we gotta have people. We gotta have some people up.
You're gonna really have a hard time.
Yeah, I have. I have a spot open all year. One spot open all year.
Oh, yeah.
And, and we just can't find, just can't find one.
Is it full-time or part-time?
Full-time. But we, we got, it's so busy, you've got to get out. The guys gotta get out on number one, and they've gotta go, or they gotta beat the golf, because if they don't beat them, you'll not get anything done. It's just that busy where you, if you're dealing with golf, you know, you're not gonna, you can't load your ash, you can't, you know, you gotta be quiet, and you're, you gotta get out, get done, and, and in front of them. When we start at seven o'clock, at six-thirty in the morning, they're gone. So, more people you can get, the better.
They've got to be the first round. They got to be the first round.
Yeah. Well, I'm typically first round, cause I run around for anybody else to. But yeah, they, you gotta get out first. I mean, that's everywhere, it's not just.
Do you run that course every morning, before anyone goes out?
Every morning. And probably every, and probably every evening. To see what's been done that day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one job that's been open all year, is that a question of salary or pay?
I don't think so, cause there've been people put in, but they didn't, they didn't make the cut. The assistant, uh, spot, then I guess you've seen it open, that's for the maintenance, Jake, it, my son's leaving to take another spot, and he did all that. He would spray and do all that stuff, uh, which took a ton off of me. So, I've had a guy call from McDonald's. And I talked to him for about a half hour, and told him what I, what I wanted, and he's got everything we need, as far as the license and everything, the spraying license, which is, you gotta have it. I've got it, but I, I want the person that does that to have it too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So he's got that, and he, he, I think that the, not the Golf Club of Georgia, Georgia Club or something down there, McDonald's. And I did some research on him, and he's there, and he's wanting to get out of there. And really, really wants the job, so. We're supposed to be here next week, I think, to just talk. So that'd be good.
Can you find him a place to live?
It's true.
Right now?
I think he said he had family in Dawson County. See, Dawson or Lunkin', I can't remember. Maybe he wanna get back up display, but, it's just, you know, it's hard to find people who wanna work, I mean, anywhere. I mean, I'm sure it's not just there, it's probably all over the county, it's hard to find people.
Yeah, we have that problem all over.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would normally get high school kids begging for a job, begging to come in and work. I want.
I'm hearing that more high school kids are starting to work again.
I, I wish I could find a couple. I mean, just, if they wanted, you know, part-time, I remember in school, part-time, telling them to work. I did.
Yeah, yeah. We probably all did. But the superintendent was telling me that more are going back to getting jobs. Robert's hired, they, uh, ETC's hired four of his audio video kids, from his, from his class.
And a lot of them don't, you know, wanna work that type of job, you know?
Yeah. Is that anybody from the golf team?
No. I got one right now, but he's, I mean, he's not, he's there every now and then, you know? He'll come in, we need a little bit, and, but. When you, when they call and you tell them, it's not a Monday through Friday job, you know, you, you're gonna have to work the weekend. And it, it just turns a lot of people off. They don't, they don't want that Saturday, they don't want that Sunday. You know, they don't wanna have to be, they want Monday through Friday, and have their weekend to themselves, so. I'm sure a lot of people would, you know?
Yeah, right. Reality.
It's, and it's not every weekend. I've got it staggered, you know, um, where the guys get time off, you know, but there's, fair and sunny, you gotta work, and if something happens, you gotta be there. It's just, that's the business. They want a holiday off. I do too, you know, but.
You too?
That's you.
You get.
July fourth, when everybody's at the lake, I'm at the golf course.
What are your two holidays?
Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day.
Okay.
And I had, I almost had a Thanksgiving thing that one year.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised you don't do it.
Well, I did, and then I had about forty people signed up, and then evidently, they didn't ask mama about it. Cause the names, I noticed the sheet, it's, it's just already getting.
They were trying to avoid a family gathering.
I told Carolyn that, my wife, that one time my son did it, she said, "Well, if you do, you just stay." My one day.
You can find your turkey dinner somewhere else, right? You're not exactly a turkey trot, that they do it first thing, and then go eat.
Then none, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a good year. We've got, I think this month's gonna be, this month's gonna be even bigger.
Hi. How are you?
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, yes. We all thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Y'all good?
Am I good?
Good.
Hey.
Hey, babe. Come on back this way.
Come on in.
How are you?
Good, there you go. Good seeing you.
You too.
Hey, bud. Good, man. Good, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't know what you wanted.
I don't.
He makes money.
Yeah, right.
He's letting life give you the rest of him. He makes money. Down this way.
Yeah, it's been good, it's been like this month, I mean, this last month, you know, the month before was a hundred and seventy-five, I think. And this month, this last month was a hundred and forty-three.
It's set to.
Just in September.
Rounds?
A hundred and forty-six thousand.
Oh, oh, I thought.
Rounds was twenty, not.
I was about to say.
Yeah.
You're a good waiter.
But this month, I think, with leaves, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big month.
Yeah, the weather looks pretty decent.
Yeah.
Talking about the Apple Festival.
It's gonna be crazy. Seventy-five, no problem.
Crazy good, crazy good. Couple of Apple Festivals like that, both weekends.
God, reminds me, I gotta call them, they're wanting a golf cart. Sure they do. I told Kyle, you know, he plays up there. Told Kyle, I said, "Buddy, a golf cart, you got to, buddy, go buy you a cart." I don't know.
But then they only use it once a year.
I know. I'll give, I'll give them a golf cart and a utility cart. I'll give them, I'll give them two, but, but no big deal. We can make. But, can't remember her name.
Natalie.
Natalie. I need to call her. She called me the other day, and I was just swamped, and I text her and told her I'd call her right back, and of course, I didn't. I'll call her when I get there.
You didn't get signed back?
I did.
Sure.
You're a magician.
I don't know.
He's a hard worker.
He's a hard worker, but, and that's such a beautiful place.
It is. He is the right person for that job, yeah. I had not, I don't guess I have laid eyes on you since we graduated from high school. Well, had I went, until you came to work here.
Yeah, I know.
I had, I had heard good things prior to you coming here, so.
It was just so bad.
Yeah.
You know, it was just so bad. Cause I remember when I rode, came up here and rode around, and I went home, and me and Carolyn were sitting there having supper. I hadn't said anything about what I said, you know, who I talked to or what. She said, "Well, how was it?" And I said, "Well, there ain't any one way that place can get it, and that's a, if you can't get it, it works for what it is." I mean, the greens were just, not all of them, but they were just, it was pit, pit. And that's what people don't, the ones that wanna complain about this or that, that's what they don't.
They don't know where it came from. Right.
That's what they don't, yeah. Or they weren't here then, you know? Cause it was, it was bad. And there were a few years there where we didn't, we didn't make any money, we didn't make any money.
Yeah, we all get to that point. You know, the saying, you guys spend money to make money?
You do.
That is true, and.
I mean, that's probably more than, than I've probably ever asked for, on the, on the capital side, you know? I remember sitting there, Saturday morning, Whitney even had a computer up there. I bought my laptop from home. To keep me doing something, cause I knew I was gonna be bored to death by myself. Now, one person could run it all by. And I would go home, and I'd think, "It was a good day," you know? I made twelve hundred bucks. It was a good day.
No, ten hundred.
Yeah. But it's, it's one of those courses that's just, it's just unique, you know? It's not like anything else, even on Petosa, it's, we've got views that they don't have.
Yeah, for sure.
We've got that, we've got that elevation that they just, they just don't have.
Mm-hmm.
You know? And you walk, somebody comes in and wants to just get a little information, they'll walk out to the first tee, they've never seen anything like that before in their life. Never.
That ride along the river, that's beautiful.
Yeah, it doesn't get any better than that. Especially right now. I rode through there yesterday, evening, and the leaves were on the cart path.
Yeah.
Oh, it was, yeah.
I'm surprised you don't hope people won't get me to get there.
Well, I have, I have. Free.
And then?
Yeah. Lot of, lot of little, just the members go in there and like have a little baby shower or birthday party or something, you know? You don't want, I've had guys sit out there a couple of weeks ago, on football, and they just, about six o'clock or so, having some beer and watch, watch TV, and that's what it's for.
Uh, where did you go after we graduated?
To a course, or a school.
Well, yeah, where did, where'd you move, where'd you go after we graduated high school?
Jasper.
And so you were in Jasper that whole time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, no, you had family.
Well, I mean, I lived here.
You had family in Arizona.
Well, dad and this, we still live here, dad and this still live here, and then, uh.
They moved back out to?
They moved that west. Uh, and when, we, we had, me and Carolyn, I had bought a house down there, cause I was working down there, and I bought a house down there. Um, and then Carolyn and I were dating, and went along, she moved in.
Yeah.
And then we got married, but, uh, we lived down there till I came up here. Same, same place, yeah. Cause I was, I was dating her, and I was living here. I just didn't get out, but I worked all the time.
It is, when you graduate, you just, everybody goes, yeah. And you can just be one county over and not see each other for your, you're in your own world.
Years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Go raise your rates.
What, like January one?
That's when it'll be effective, so.
I think so. Check the board, your board and.
'Cause I know we, we even, I think we went up last year on, on the tournament fee, but we need to go again on those. 'Cause there's a minimum, if you don't have a, if you don't have sixty players, it costs you more. You gotta have more than sixty, or you're not gonna make any money, 'cause we're gonna, that's just taking money out of our pocket there, and they all understand that, they, they haven't had a problem with that. But if I was going up on that, then I'll mention that to them, like I say, I think we'll get next month. Seventy-five, I'll tell them seventy-five, see what they're. And then through the week, maybe, 'cause we're fifty-five to sixty now. The senior rate's what you wanna, was what you wanna be careful with.
Yeah.
'Cause you don't want those creepy colors down here in there. I mean, that, they had fifty-two this morning at home.
That's so great, though, it's so good for them.
Oh, yeah.
Such a good kid.
That was one of the, that was one of the things I did, was we gave them a break, when I, when I first got there, I gave them a break, 'cause they were paying the same, and I gave them a break, those guys don't work. You know, but they're there, every Monday, they're there, and they do what they.
Or it's twice a week?
Yeah, play every Monday and Thursday, and I, I mean, I, I'd have to get on them every once in a while, 'cause they get to doing just whatever it is they wanna do, you know. And I set a time for them to go, and in the summer, they can't go any earlier, because we've got to get stuff done. We can't just have them, 'cause I go one, and then they go eighteen backwards, and if they go early, then my guys are not gonna be done, and that puts us behind. So, they started to sneak out a little early, a little early, a little early, and I went down to the basement where they met, and I, I told them, I said, you know I can lock the carts up. So, if I need to lock them up until eight o'clock, I will. But I made them do it again, but they take, but four of them will take three carts. 'Cause they don't wanna write something about it, well, that's just wasted gas, I mean, I'm seeing you, that's just a waste of.
Yeah.
You can sit, we're just, we're just a shame.
I think I watch.
I have your, um, email on.
It's full-time, dog, somebody told me one of them, you got it, you're at the golf course, he works for a company, it's probably been about six years, he said, you work at the golf course, you better.
I'll never get it.
I tell you what.
Come on over.
I'll switch with you, and I'll, 'cause you're gonna be my guy, and I'll be yours, and I guarantee you, you won't make it a week. No DJ, who's that?
Oh, God.
Oh, thanks.
So, what do they pay?
Thanks, I'm sorry.
Fifteen for their car, if they're a member, they pay the same as everybody else does. If they're a member, they pay fifteen.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate you there, appreciate you so much, that's what we do.
They love, they love, they call that, that's, that's.
You'd be a club owner, that's right.
They, they still think, and I tell them.
Your office on the, your office on the golf course are the most productive offices in the county.
And I let them believe that, to a point. We don't.
So much profit.
I didn't know we played backwards, that's good. Well, I have to, I mean, I get them, they go to ten or eleven or twelve, and then once that group on twelve gets past one, then my regular golfing go off to six. So, they'll hold the course at that.
That's a great idea.
Yeah. And they have a timer to get to one, give them two hours to get to number one, and get on, and if they don't, I'm sending them off off in the middle. And they.
Just score.
And they make it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
If you need me, just let me know.
Thank you.
I'll leave this with you.
Appreciate it.
What is that?
That's the golf cart, you can thumb through it there and see if there's any other numbers that I missed.
Does David need to?
He will eventually, yes.
Okay, we, if it's approved and all that, okay.
And I meant, I was gonna mention this, before I leave, I forgot, software. The software I have now, I've had for a while, and it's okay, it's fine.
You got about four up?
Four up, but I wanna switch to that Club K, and I wanna do it if I can, before the first of the year. So I can get all this stuff transferred over, it's much, much better, it's much, much more efficient. Um, these guys actually work in the golf shops, and they know how to check people in at.
What's their cost?
It's fifty-nine hundred a year.
So that'd be a little.
I wanted to look.
Yeah, I mean, it could go anyway, but M and O would be, since it's the software, it'd be better to just be in the M and O.
I know the budget's not approved till January, but that's gonna be tough, getting everything switched.
Think you can get it done out of this year's?
That's what I was, can we find, can we find some somewhere?
Probably.
If we can do it this year, then we wouldn't have to worry about it. Surely I can scramble it out.
Surely.
Surely I scramble that, says great, 'cause I'd like to go ahead and do it like the end of November, December's pretty slow, you know.
Right.
And if you get everything flipped over and big day to go.
Yeah, 'cause those, uh.
'Cause I gotta have four up running on one.
Implementations take some time.
Yeah, I gotta have four up running on one, so I can get people checked in and still do reports and everything, and then have the other one, then when I get it done, I can do that computer.
And when do you hope to switch the carts over?
As quick as I can get them here.
Okay, so going ahead and moving on that?
Yeah, it'll be, uh, I wouldn't think they would be here before maybe April, I don't think in January, February, so if they can get them here in April, that's fine. Even, even the first of May would be fine, I, I don't, I don't care.
And then that'd be a total, bring a overall ball, be a total replacement ball, except for one's front gun.
Right, and they're just a year, so they're, they're fine.
I'm serious, they have brakes on the speaker.
Oh, it is. It is, uh, Daniel's up there, and as I speak, putting two, sets the brakes on the others, right. And like I say, he goes, been awesome, that they give them to me, now, if they see the issue, they're giving us the brakes, which if they, I don't know. 'Cause I have put it, um.
Yeah.
So, like you say, people will play it, you know, they, they ride, they ride the entire way around, and of course, they. And I would do it, I support it, won't get it wrong.
Right, right, right.
All right.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
I love that on you, pretty.
Wonderful.
Sorry about that.
Love you. Good.
How's your new place?
Good.
Good, good, good.
Very good. We're empty nasty bad.
Yeah, the wedding already takes place?
Take it now, no, not till September, next year, yeah.
I think that's exciting this year.
Yeah.
I think we can find that in this year.
I'll get you, we'll get you some time.
Probably, 'cause I know, my past experience with implementations, when new systems comes back, you probably, you might have to leave yourself a little longer, than I would, to get that done.
Well, I agree.
Well, not bad. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Great spot.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
You're just coming. Your turn.
My turn.
Hey, she, she brought me.
I hope there was getting me in the R V.
Yeah, I dropped them, I brought money first.
And that's, that's how you go into a budget.
That's what I should've done, that's what I should've done, bought my big.
Hey, I was telling her, you're second in line.
Okay. So y'all, I can't hear.
No sign in here.
Good morning, y'all.
No, no sign. You gotta go home and change.
No.
Yeah.
This is my, my new present I got today.
Wow, that's horrible.
It is, oh, it's awesome, thank you.
I was repairing last weekend.
Yeah, I sold out, I don't normally watch them, but, then, but, so. I have to kinda stay on track a little bit, so how are we all?
Good.
Good.
How are things with you?
Well, now that the bills are in the mail and we're collecting.
Getting better.
It's getting better, so.
Are you collecting?
Oh, yeah, what I collect already, and what we collect already have a really good team. Oh, just a little under two point seven.
Really? Wow.
It's coming in.
Is that a lot of escrow?
No, I haven't seen escrow yet.
A lot of majority of them are paid by escrow.
Well, I don't know, I have to live. I mean, pretty good percentage. I don't know.
Would you say fifty percent are paid by escrow?
I'd say forty.
Forty?
Mm-hmm.
That's what I think here, yeah, that's the easiest one.
And they don't pay us till the last minute, so.
Do you get big balls?
Of course.
Yeah.
You get big balls, escrow checks.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Put on their money till they have to.
That's right.
Yeah.
They do it intentionally.
Yeah.
And the hard part about all that is, the customers pay their bill first.
Of course.
And then, and escrow money comes in, and then I have to issue all the refunds to the escrow department, 'cause I have to take the money that comes in first. So why are you paying your bill when you know you have escrow? Or they call and say.
Am I escrowed? I'm not, I don't have a clue if you're escrowed.
Don't you send these bills to the mortgage company? I said, no, we do not. Well, you always have, no, we haven't.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, Cherokee County does, I said, no, they don't, it's state law, we have to mail them to the January first owner, it's not your mortgage company. It's your job. So, same story, every year, I sold this, well, we don't care, forward the bill to the new owner. So it says it on your bill like six times. Read. It's all good, though, we get there.
Nobody reads the bill, except for the bottom line.
That's right. And the biggest complaint this year was that the bond is not on the assessment notice.
Well, I believe that's House Bill.
Five eighty-one.
Eighty-one, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, your tax bill and your assessment never match. It's an estimate.
Yeah.
You've had more phone calls about that than probably anything this year so far.
Wow, interesting.
They wanna see on that assessment notice, the closest they can get to what their bill's gonna be.
Yeah.
And I don't blame them, but it wasn't our call.
But, uh, you know, take it to the legislature.
So they tell them, so, but we're getting there, as long as I'm collecting, I'm good to go. So what kind of wonderful questions do you have for me, the guy?
Great. Yeah. You wanna be here, Tom?
I do, uh, to, I'm gonna grab my, um. Registration, I think it's the two thousand seventeen.
You still, is it the four?
It's the one that Frank and Sue bought when they were in office, so.
That's not seven, too.
It wasn't May seventh, hey, what would it be?
Two thousand seven, maybe.
Maybe two thousand seven.
Maybe two thousand seven.
Yeah.
Two thousand seven, so I hadn't asked for a new vehicle the whole time I've been in office, so.
You what, have not?
Have not, so we've been using the old one to the bare bones, so.
Got you, God.
And we gotta have four-wheel drive, 'cause the places that sometimes we have to post property or, well, you guys know what Gilmore County's like in the roads, so I don't have to dig. But they're getting better and better.
Slowly.
They are, though, we've noticed a lot of them, so.
I wish the people who are so really upset about the roads would travel some of the back roads to some of the joining counties.
They need to.
Anyway, yeah.
They just.
They're paying so much more in taxes, and they're terrible.
Yes. It's city, but I don't, I mean, I don't hear a lot of people complaining about the tax just being high in Gilmore, I really don't.
Yeah, I get a lot of that.
Well, you got a lot of movements now, too, so, you know, a hundred thousand dollar house that sold for three sixty, I'm like, it's your fault.
Well, when it sells for three sixty, yeah, but if you've got a hundred thousand dollar house that now is assessed at three sixty, we have the floating exemption, and you shouldn't tell any difference at all.
Right. But these guys moving in here from out of state.
Yeah.
And they don't complain about our taxes.
No, they're higher than where, obviously, where they came from.
Yes, they're much higher from where, wherever they, they're coming from, so. But other than that, we'll just keep on collecting.
We're more than six floors, I don't, and I bet we might be lower than that after everybody else goes up. Yeah.
And I did get a new employee.
Documentation, they show it on the Department of Revenue's website.
Easy, so.
My new employee's working out very well, um, Renee's been here longer than I have, and she's gone to two days a week. Um, hopefully just through the end of the year, but we'll see how that pans out, but.
Yeah.
So far, so good with, with that, so, I'm not gonna replace my tag and title supervisor, which is Renee, just gonna have my new employee be a frontline clerk. 'Cause my deputy is amazing, if you guys haven't met her yet, you need to come with Heather, she's amazing, she's gonna do a good job for you guys. Heather Pullman, she's my deputy.
Next time I have a problem that I need to talk to you about, I think I'll just ask to talk to the deputy.
There you go.
Then I can meet her.
There you go, she's, she's really good, so I'm trying to leave, which, I'm, I'm planning on running one more time. But when I leave the county for retirement, I'm trying to leave the guys in the best hands that I can, so. And she'll be really good, hopefully she'll be elected, so. Hel- He- Heather Pullman.
Okay.
She's really good, come meet her. Great, gives me some breathing room, too.
Now, you're on the, what I call the main cycle, right, not the one coming up.
I got three years to try to run again.
Almost all the Gilmore County elected officials are on that one cycle, except for me and John.
Yep.
We're, we're off cycle, so.
We'll just make sure you run again.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
Is the city, Ethan Mayor, I mean, um, is the city next year, or some of the city council? Let me talk about this.
Uh, Board of Ed, one of the Board of Education cities is in twenty-six.
The city was last year, wasn't it?
Was it just last year?
I guess it was, when Sandy, Sandy missed it.
Jake was running when I was, so Jake's.
Yeah, his seat's coming up. I hope, I think the mayors will be a couple more years. Too bad we all can't get in the same cycle, that would be nice.
Yeah, I guess if we all switched at the same time, then it'd be a little bit.
It could be difficult.
That's when I retire, that's when I retire, and it's gone. Yeah.
You're not going anywhere, are you?
No.
She's not allowed to do it.
I don't think so.
Not, not playing in.
But while, or Alaska was further, further, further away than here. Not long enough.
That was, that was far enough, and now it's just a distant neighbor. It was great.
That was a good trip, that was a good trip.
I don't have any questions, I'm good.
I don't, I don't have any questions.
And your tackle is not too hard, no.
Yeah, that truck under that fixed four of them around.
Yeah, so I don't trade it in, I just turn it back over to.
Just give Sandy the keys, and she's got a, a quick form that just.
Okay, and what do I do, just go to the dealership and pick out something that's in my budget?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I can't do that till after budget's correct.
It'll have to be after January first, 'cause it, not, it's just approved, but actually in, in effect.
Does she need to get bids, or like, does she need to get a couple of quotes? On vehicles, I know. I've never done this, so. Um, usually, if, if you're wanting like another Ford Explorer or something similar to that, there's usually a state contract price somewhere that.
I think it's Allen Vigil.
Yeah, somebody can get for you, but you don't necessarily have to buy it from them, you just need to get, find out what the state contract price is.
And then you can buy it anywhere as long as it's that low, that or cheaper.
Okay. Yeah, Allen Vigil's one of them, I know Brandon's Chevrolet's. And sometimes, you know, um, if you can find out what the state contract price is, for example, Omen Explorer or whatever, and Robbie Thompson can. Get one for you, add or below, like Charlie was saying, then he can get it.
get one for you, I have it below, like Charlie was saying, then you get it from me.
He would usually beat the state price.
That's good to know.
You can get it local.
Just don't tell him what the state price is, just tell him he gotta beat it.
Gotta beat it. I'm sure he'll get by that.
I'm sure he can.
Alright, guys, well, I appreciate it. Thanks for all you guys do for us.
Thank you.
Keep bringing it.
Yeah.
I can't believe you're at two point seven, that's awesome. Ninety-nine percent, wasn't it for, for twenty-four?
That's great. I try and stay at ninety-nine percent, that's my goal all along. I'll never be a hundred with Cuswellati and the bankruptcies and that kinda thing. But, and Cuswellati, I think Cuswellati's getting worse and worse. If, if they're not paying their dues, they're not paying their property taxes. Cause they keep swearing they're unbilledable lots and they're done. They're just not gonna do it anymore, so. And I can't even sell them a tax sale. You know, if I could sell them a tax sale and get new wood in there, it'd be a different story, but a lot of these, they consider unbilledable lots, so.
Those are the same repeaters, repeat offenders?
Yes.
When I first got here, county had a lot in Cuswellati and it was a nice buildable lot. I thought we'd never go bad when it ran out of it.
It's crazy. But people hear about Cuswellati and the dues and they don't wanna, unless you're from out of state.
Our problems.
They don't want those. Yeah, but they don't wanna pay those high dues. Cause they're high.
Our problem with state regulations.
Do you watch her?
Our problem with state regulations, you can't, you can't discount them and you can't lower the price, you know, you got, cause you gotta get the value of it and all that stuff.
And the camper lots are selling like crazy.
Yeah.
Camper lots in Cuswellati sell like crazy, so. And I have, you know, the same people a lot of times come to the tax sale, so they'll get the list. And, you know, some of them got pretty deep pockets, so they do it as an investment, so. That helps us out too, so.
When is the next tax sale?
Um, I haven't, uh, did I schedule one? I think May.
Okay.
May, July. I got three scheduled for next year. Well, you had three scheduled for this year, but the third one was, um. And we paid every one of them before tax sale. I sent him a big warning. It's gonna add a minimum of probably four hundred and fifty dollars to each one of these. So, he paid them all, so I didn't have to have that third set. And didn't have to advertise, which saved us money.
Yeah.
So, that's it. I just put everything I had of his up for tax sale, cause he just stayed behind, so.
But now that's caught up.
Yep. But other than that, you know where to find me if you need me.
Thank you very much.
Alright, you guys have a great week.
They come, bring me a couple of checks.
Don't worry, I will be back. I'll be back in fifteen days.
Thank you.
They let me know when that credit card comes in.